Good afternoon, want to call back into regular session the Board of Supervisors Sacramento County for the June 6, 2017 meeting, and I'll ask Flo to call and roll, establish a quorum please.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy. Peters.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you, and we've got a pretty full agenda this afternoon, but we do have one report out from the closed session items, so I'll turn to our county council, Krista Whitman, to give us the report out.
At closed session today, the Board of Supervisors meeting as a successor agency of the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento and the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency voted 5-0 to initiate litigation that shall be known as successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the County of Sacramento, Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and Redevelopment Agency's Employee Association as petitioners and plaintiffs versus Michael Cohen in his official capacity as Director of the State of California Department of Finance at all.
Okay, thank you Krista. All right, with that then, do we have any items to be continued this afternoon, or we're gonna hear them all as ordered, right?
Let me just double check. Yeah, no, we're hearing everything.
Okay, very good. All right Flo, go ahead and call the first 2 o'clock item please.
Okay, for item 48, it's the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charge for the Glenborough at Easton and Easton Place projects within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Okay, Mr. Davidson, good afternoon. So this morning, or just...
Actually, no, second time this afternoon. With that, this benefit category change for the master plan project known as the Glenborough at Easton, Easton Place project is to, is for 29 parcels, of which there's two owners, and is to change their County Service Area Number 1 service charges category, benefit category change actually, and it'll be changing these parcels from the current category, which is safety light only, to one of two categories, ducted street and safety lights, and there's both residential and non-residential categories. I do want to point out that these changes actually, well, the changes kick in, but the charges only kick in if the homeowners association, who actually is going to be maintaining and operating the streetlights somehow falters and what's known as a triggering event occurs. If there's a maintenance agreement between the county and the homeowners association, if that trigger event occurs, then these are the service charges that would be in place. So with that for today, I'm recommending that you direct the clerk to tabulate the return protest ballots, and depending on the results, so that the clerk will read in the statement, and then I'll make a second recommendation on adopting today's resolution.
Okay, all right, with that then, we'll turn to our clerk to tabulate the results.
Okay. I'm not gonna get a drum roll.
How's that?
Okay, for your first ballot, this is from Easton Development Company, and Easton has 10 separate, excuse me, 19 separate parcels, and they voted yes. And then you also have another ballot from Aerojet Rocketdyne Incorporated, they have 10 separate parcels, and they voted yes. So I'm gonna read the tabulation statement now. At the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protest. Two protest ballots were returned to the close of the public hearing today, which represented 100% of the property owners. 100% of the returned ballots are in favor of the proposed benefit category change, and 0% are opposed. Therefore, no majority protest was registered, and it is recommended that the board adopt the resolution approving the benefit category change for Glenborough at Easton and Easton Place within Zone 1 of the County Service Area Number 1.
Okay.
So with that, it's recommended now that you adopt today's resolutions with the changes in that resolution that the clerk just read in to the record.
All right, let me ask, does anyone wish to address the board on this item, read into the record? All right, seeing none, then the chair would move adoption of recommendation noting the ballot results.
Second.
Okay, second please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, thank you all. Okay, next item please.
Item 49 is the Barrett Ranch East General Plan Amendment, Community Plan Amendment, Rezone, Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map, Tentative Subdivision Map, Special Development Permit, and Design Review for Property Located on the North Side of Antelope Road in the Antelope Community. The environmental document is a draft environmental impact report.
Okay, Leanne, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Leanne Moffett, your planning director. I do not have a PowerPoint. You previously heard this item on October 26th, at which time you certified the final AIR with the MMRP program and findings of overrides, and approved the general plan amendment resolution. You took tentative action on the remainder of the items, which are what in front of you, are in front of you today, the rezone, the maps, special development permits, et cetera, as detailed in your board report. So the item is ready for you to take action, however, there are a couple remarks I wanted to make before you do the vote. We did receive an additional comment letter, this is someone that our project manager, Charity Gold, has been in communication with, and so we did forward the board that comment, and it's a similar comment to one that had been made previously. And then Bob Davidson is here, because at the last hearing, you did have some questions about the finance plan, timing and schedule, and so before you acted on the board items, I wanted to have Bob Davidson come up and give you a quick report back based on those questions, unless you have any other questions of me first.
Leanne, just to clarify, there was communication received as well yesterday afternoon about 3 o'clock, that came in to each member of the Board of Supervisors.
Is that the one from Sherry and Steve Lasik?
Yes.
Yes, that's the one I was alluding to.
Oh, that's when you're, okay.
Yes, they were concerned, a prior version of the map had had kind of an open space area behind their homes on the east side of Willargrave Road, and that's now with the backyards. We were very concerned about creating a long strip of land where homeless could go and be, where there's no road and no ability for the sheriff to monitor that. They liked that prior version where there was open space area there, we just had real concerns about safety with that kind of design.
Well, how's it comport, they would like to see it, want an open space, not in backyards, and maintained, do they like to see something different than what's being proposed?
They would like to see something different, yes.
And they said they talked with all the neighbors, I don't know if they talked with Supervisor Frost, but they said they talked with all the neighbors and they're in agreement regarding the issue.
I don't, I mean, this was recommended for approval by the CPAC, this is the one comment that I'm aware of, so I don't, I can't speak to the other neighbors' issue. But it would result in a very long, very thin open space area we didn't have, the Park District did not want to take that and maintain it, so it would be under the smud power lines, and we were very concerned that with no visibility, that a long strip of land under smud power line easements with no road along it and no visibility, that could become a problem.
So it gets incorporated into backyards on the new properties, and so they have this area that's, is it usable? Is it landscapable?
Um...
What sort of restrictions go with it?
There is an easement over that area.
Sure, there is, you've got overhead power lines.
Yeah, there's restrictions, but they can use it, you know, for their dog area or just kind of open space area to keep it mowed.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, good afternoon again.
So since the last meeting, you know, we certainly received the direction to get the Antelope Finance and Plan Development Impact Fee Program implemented in a quicker timeframe than we had planned. So with that, we've had several meetings, we've had meetings with basically the special district section, Department of Transportation, we've had some internal meetings, and also some meetings with developers and their representatives, as well for the Barrett Ranch property. And with that, we have, one, we've gotten the ball rolling on the discussions that are needed to take place so that we can move forward with this. Two, I believe there's concurrence with the county staff and with the development group on the recommendations for moving forward. Third, with that, we've developed a schedule in which an updated Antelope Fee Program could be before the board in the February 2018 timeframe. And finally, I just want to point out that a key milestone on that is that that schedule assumes that by September 30th, we have an updated roadway capital improvement program and an updated park capital improvement program. And, you know, to get there, it's gonna take work with county staff, Department of Transportation, as well as, we've already received some requests on some of the suggestions that the developers are proposing, which many of them were agreeable to. So with that, we will be before your board in February with that updated fee program.
Questions or comments, Mr. Davidson? Are any other efforts slipping because this one's been accelerated?
We, you know, there's certainly a lot of things going forward, and a lot of them take our attention, and we're doing our best to accommodate that. I don't know of anything that is slipping specifically because we made this determination to move this forward.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that, I know you've chatted with me, but we've had some fee updates that have been long in the works, again, with certainly work responsibilities assigned to county staff, but also obviously to development interests and other landowners in that north vineyard, Vineyard Springs, Florin Vineyard Gap area, particularly when it comes to roads and some of the triggers there and so forth, and I guess updated park fees and some of the other things that will be a part of those considerations, but I just want to be sure, because I know that's, we've talked on a number of occasions about the status of that, and then we run into snag here and there, although I think we're okay for the season, I guess. What is the contemplated timeframe for that update?
That one, we're still hoping to get that one to the board before then of this year. We're on a milestone, I just talked about, when the capital improvement programs are ready. County staff have been working with the engineers, and you have to understand, that effort's a lot more complicated than the Antelope effort, as alluded to the last meeting, this Antelope Capital Improvement Program is much smaller. But with that, you know, that's coming to an effort, I was hoping to have capital improvement programs for roads by the end of May, and May has just ended, but we're very close, you know, so...
Okay, so you're still looking forward before the end of the calendar year, if possible?
That's what we're gonna attempt to do.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions on the update? All right, seeing none, thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
All right, Leanne? We don't have any board member punched up here, but...
All right, I also wanted to note the applicant representatives are here today, including George Carpenter, if you have any specific questions for them as well.
Okay, do you wish to address the board, George? Yeah, okay, Mr. Carpenter, come forward. And I don't have anyone signed up to speak, so if there's any other party that would like to address this, please get a speaker for me, so I can call upon you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's George Carpenter, Vice President of Wind Communities. First, I want to start off by thanking you for your action on April 26th, I think I heard Leanne say October, but it was April 26th that the formal action was taken. As to the letter that you received from the Lasik family, I did not have the opportunity to see that, but it sounds like it was a similar letter from before. We have a difference of opinion on how that land should be treated that runs along the east side of Barrett Ranch north of Poker Lane. We feel very strongly that should be in the backyards and not just a casual open space area, we think it'll be maintained better, it'll be an amenity for people who have homes that back up to that area, while there are restrictions because the easement, they'll be able to take advantage of using as open space, gardens, pet areas, play areas, so, you know, we do think it would be something beneficial to those folks. I do want to say that your staff has been at its best in the last couple of weeks, working with us on trying to figure out how to get these roads built out in Antelope, and updating the finance plan, very appreciative of the efforts they've made to move this forward, and not just to move it forward, but to move it forward in a smart fashion, a very solution-oriented team that we've been working with, so thank you very much to them for that. And then, you know, I do just want to echo Bob Davidson's comments about moving this forward, we think it's a fairly simple update to the finance plan, we've done a lot of homework already ahead of this to be prepared, to be able to be responsive to staff, to meet their timeframe, so that we can get it back to your board in February. The reason it's important for us that it keeps moving is the certainty of having it done allows us to spend, you know, probably over a million dollars to do the design of those road improvements out there, and that's something that we're interested in doing sooner rather than later, so we can get construction underway. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks George. Any questions, Mr. Carpenter? All right, seeing none, thanks. Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Well, thank you, George, and also, I wanted to mention that that is the top priority for the community, that even in the CPAC report, they wrote, can you please prioritize the roads? So we're all really excited about that project, and I move, would like to move staff's recommendations.
Second.
Just move to second, Leanne, do you need to put anything on the record as to what that incorporates?
I'm sorry?
Did you need to put anything else additionally on the record as to what the motion incorporates relative to staff recommendation?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, that is motion and second, then, if there are no further comments, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item 50 is the Hedge 22 Time Extension Project, a five-year extension of time for a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide 6.18 acres into 22 residential lots in the RD 5 Zone for a property located in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an addendum to prior mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, Leanne?
All right, on this one, I do have a short PowerPoint. This is a time extension, I think the board is getting used to seeing these in the Vineyard Community. This is when there are vesting maps that are being extended, they do need to go to the board. So the overview here is the site is located generally north of Gerber and east of Elk Grove Florin in the North Vineyard Station specific plan, approximately 750 feet east of McCoy Avenue. It's a time extension, and they are requesting five additional years. Back in, here's October rather than April, in October of 2006, the board approved a rezone, vesting tentative map, and special development permit and affordable housing plan to divide 6.18 acres into 22 residential lots. It's in the center of that map there in the red hash mark area, relatively smaller site. The original project expiration was November of 2009, but there were a number of statutory state exemptions because of the economy, and they have now filed to extend the map. Here is the project site, which shows still remaining vacant, and the details of the map on the left-hand side. And without further action, the map will have expired on November 10th of 2016. The CPAC is recommending approval on a 5 to 0 vote, and the Planning Commission is also recommending approval on a 5 to 0 vote. So with that, staff is also recommending approval, and the actions would be to determine that the mitigated negative declaration previously prepared is still adequate and appropriate to approve the requested five-year map extension, subject to conditions and findings, and recognize that the project is subject to the previously adopted MMRP.
Okay, this map was actually previously adopted back in 2006?
Uh, yes.
And so when we extend this five years, it'd be 2020, it'd be 16 years between time of submittle till...
Yes, that's why they, yes, that's why they come to the board.
But each time on extension, you do look at conditions that would be relevant, so the extension just doesn't get...
On the extensions, you're, there is a limited range of changes that you can make to those conditions. You can address health and safety matters, but you cannot, you know, change the color of a building or something more minor, which wouldn't be applicable in this case, but the sole decision is really to approve or deny, you cannot completely reopen all of the conditions.
Okay, so if something changed with the roads, I mean, over nearly a 20-year span, obviously, you know, lots of things can change, some may stay static.
Right.
All the conditions that previously applied, apply, but there's no, so when you say health and safety, what does that cover?
That would go beyond roads, I mean, I don't know that I've ever seen one with health and safety.
We have made some condition changes, and we have debated those before the project review committee in terms of what is allowed under state law. I didn't attend the condition review meetings on this one, I don't believe that any major items were raised by the commenting agencies, but we do send every project typically through two rounds of review at project review committee, because this is a map. So it did go through that process, and if there had been major concerns, we would have been made aware of them.
Did this map require inclusion in the police CFD?
Um...
Police services?
It did, yes.
I heard a yes, a whisper, yes.
Condition 27, I'm being told.
Okay. All right. Yep, I see it. Oh, it is, it, no, that's landscaping means.
That's landscaping.
Where's the police facilities history?
That would have been on the rezone, which has been effective.
So that's a condition you can't put on a map? Yes, we can.
Which one?
The police CFD, police services CFD, I thought...
Yeah, at the time we did, I think it was when we had rezones, we would add the, we added those conditions to it.
Right, there were rezones, but if a rezone happened before the map came through, because we were...
Can we add it now?
If it wasn't on there.
On an extension.
Yeah, right, because if you talk about health and safety, that's part of safety?
I don't know, without looking more into that, whether that's considered a health and safety under the MAP Act.
Yeah, I think if you want us to look into that, we would probably need to continue this.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with a map, I just, we've got a number of these, and, you know, it's kind of perfunctory, but I guess I asked that question because knowing that there, you know, was a limited scope, but then when you said health and safety, and I didn't see that in the conditions, and I know that was done in the rezone, but we also said parcel maps of bigger than five after a certain date, that kicked into a subdivision, basically a subdivision map.
Right.
Which is, is, could have the police CFD requirement placed on it. Is there a way while we're, except to see if that rezone includes this, or maybe the project engineer knows this, like, does Bruce handle this, or who's handling this?
If the project engineer knows, that would be great, otherwise, my recommendation would be to continue it, I don't think they're gonna be building anytime soon, and I'd probably need to come back and need more time to do that research.
Okay, Bruce, you don't know? Mr. Walters?
Don't have that information.
Okay, all right, and if you verify that before today's session's over, I'm fine with that too, but I mean, if you want to hold, I mean, I don't want to hold this up, but...
Okay.
I do want to, again, and maybe it doesn't even qualify, but when you said health and safety, the police CFD was coming into place in, you know, in that...
Why don't you hold it until after the Ogden Ranch item, and maybe we can at least get that information and decide whether it needs to be continued?
All right, okay, very good, okay, that's fine, I don't have any other questions then, so let's just hold this item for a bit, and let's see if we can get an answer to that question, thank you. All right, let's call the next item, Flo, we'll hold that item for...
Item 51 is the Ogden Ranch Project, General Plan Amendment, Community Plan Amendment, Rezone, Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map, Phasing Plan, Small Lot Tentative Subdivision Map, Special Development Permit, Design Review, and Easement Abandonment for a property located at 8240 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay.
All right, this is the first time hearing this item, and I do have a PowerPoint as well on this one. If not, I have a hard copy. Oh, nope, there we go. All right, so this is the Ogden Ranch Project. residential, so essentially reconfigured, resulting in 38.6 acres of recreation and 31.8 acres of low-density residential. It also amends the Vineyard Community Plan, resulting in 38.6 acres of O recreation, 19.2 acres of RD7, 12.6 acres of RD10, with the flood and natural stream overlays remaining as they are. The site is currently zoned urban reserve. On the lower right of this slide, the resulting zoning is 19.2 acres of RD7, 12.6 acres of RD10, 38.6 acres of O recreation with the flood overlay. So, you can see about half the site is essentially undevelopable in open space and recreation configurations. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this map here, trying to use the cursor, because it's the colored map, it sort of shows a little bit better. The yellow lots are the RD10, the smaller lots. So, essentially, what they've done, because about half the site is impacted with open space, it is a smaller lot gated project and product. The yellow lots are the RD10 lots. Typically, in our zoning code, RD10 lots are 4,000 square feet in size. They do have a handful, some that are smaller than that. There are some smaller lots down in this area that are as small as 3,400 square feet. Many of the lots in the yellow RD10 are around 3,600 to 3,700 square feet. The tan is the RD7 lots. RD7 actually also allows you to go down to 4,000 square feet, but in this case, there are a handful that are at 5,000 square feet. Most of them are larger than the RD5 5200 square foot lot size, and there are a handful of larger ones in quarter areas that are between 8,000 and 10,000 square feet. So, you have a lot of variation happening on the site, anywhere from 3,400 square foot lot, almost up to a 10,000 square foot lot going on here. We have a number of amenities. In the upper left, this site over here will actually be a park site owned by Southgate, owned and operated by Southgate Park and Rec. So, that's the only public park area on the property with a trail going through it. This darker green site in the upper center will be a private amenity area, so the developer plans to put in a clubhouse, pool, and playground area in that green area, there's a central area, and there's some additional parking carved out as required there. This is access to the north. The site is gated on the left and the right of this entry area, so it is gated to cars. However, there are conditions requiring public pedestrian and bike access, so people can walk and bike in, although they cannot drive all the way through. This dark green here in the middle is going to be a private dog park. There's a drainage area down here, that while is a drainage area, is also designed to allow for a small pocket, private pocket park in that area. This is Laguna Creek, and there is a trail system all along Laguna Creek. A good portion of that trail system is a double trail. It's in part an equestrian trail and a bike-ped trail that will be maintained and operated by Southgate Parks. This is the entry area to the east, and it is gated to vehicles as well. And the streets, I did want to point out, the streets are private streets. The typical cross-section does show parking on one side only, so the streets will not be double parked. So, I wanted to point that out. So, moving on, oops, let me make this way. This diagram shows the large lot map and the phasing map, so the project will be built out in phases, and there is a phasing map associated with this. This is the small lot tentative map. I think I've gone through a lot of this in the prior colored map. Shows the number of RD7 versus RD10 lots, as well as the parks. So, looking at the design of the RD10 street scape, this here is a photo of the typical homes that will be built. I wanted to pause for a moment on this diagram down here in the bottom right to show how these RD10 lots will work. It's become a fairly, not an uncommon product in more dense areas to have these smaller lots, and so what a lot of developers are doing, that these developers are also going to be doing, is basically you have your lot, and it has a four-foot side yard on either side, but for this area over here, so this is your neighbor's lot, and this is your lot, you actually have an easement over their four feet. So, rather than having a zero lot line product, you actually own the four feet on either side of your house, but the person in this home here on the left of this diagram has access to the eight feet to use, so it doesn't feel all walled off. So, for your windows and your patio area there, your homes open out into that eight feet, and you can kind of have more usable area. So, that is something we see in other urban-type environments.
Just want to make sure I'm clearly in.
Yes.
Through the chair. When you say the eight feet, is it the four feet on either side, or the four feet combined on one side?
The four feet combined on one side. So, you have the four feet that you owned.
Right.
And then, you have essentially a use easement on your neighbor's four feet.
Okay.
That is not fenced off.
Okay, so the fence, the fence would constitute the functional zero lot line of the other house, right?
It's basically their wall.
Right, exactly.
Yes, so there's no fence that's going to be installed.
Got it.
Yes, so even though your neighbor owns that four feet, you get the enjoyment of the full eight feet.
Got it.
So, that you can...
You can bounce the ball off of his wall?
Yes.
Do a mural.
It is something we're seeing more and more of, and I have been in model homes that use this design and seen it in other jurisdictions where they've used these small lots, so. Oops, sorry, going the wrong way. The RD7 street scape is a little more typical RD7, RD5-style street scape. I paused on this slide too much. So, with regard to some key points here, the site is preserving 36 acres of open space with two acres of public park and corresponding land use designations. If you took the average density over the whole site, not just the urban site, it would come out under three units per acre. Obviously, the urban portions are far more dense. There are two access points, Bothwell Drive and Bradshaw Road. I've already mentioned, it is gated. However, there are pedestrian gates that are open for bike-ped access, and this is, will be very nice to have this site built out, and it is a key link in the Laguna Creek Trail Corridor Plan. I wanted to point out a couple of the specific conditions. If you happen to look through the list of conditions, it's a pretty heavily-conditioned, extensively-conditioned project. I particularly wanted to point out, because it's been a point of discussion before, is condition number five does require a homeowners association with CCNRs in condition number five. We did indicate to the board, while we wouldn't always request CCNRs in cases like this, we may, and so this is one. It doesn't have all the nuisance items in that condition number five, but there is an HOA and CCNR condition on this one. Condition number six is extremely detailed and has a lot of conditions about each of the open space lots and what can and cannot happen on each of those. The police CFD condition is condition number 64. There are about 22 conditions related to Southgate Park and Rec, conditions 65 through 85, and 121 and 122. Number 83 is the trail condition, and number 122 is the gate condition, and we do have Eric Jones with the Southgate Park and Rec here with us today. So, those were just a few of the conditions that I wanted to point out. Staff is recommending, oh, let's see, the Planning Commission recommended approval on a 5-0 vote, with their recommendations detailed there on the left, and their comments over there on the right. The Vineyard CPAC recommended approval on a three to two, three votes yes, two votes no, and four absent. The CPAC did, some members expressed some concerns about the density and the shared trail, so there's areas where the restrictions in the open space because of habitat don't allow an entirely separate equestrian trail from a bike-ped trail. It is separate for most of the way, but there are a couple pinch points, and so one of the CPAC members was concerned and wanted it entirely separated, which we've not been able to figure out how to do. So, that was one of the CPAC comments, and they did appreciate the open space preservation trails and parks. The Design Review Advisory Committee is recommending approval on a 3 to 0 vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You said you haven't been able to figure out how to address some of the pinch points in the trail system, and I think I know which one, you know, which pinch points you're talking about here. Is that because there's not enough remnant space between some of those open space wetted areas and the backs of homes, or fences, fence lines, I should say?
It's more, it's not just always the homes, it's in some cases, the buffers that are required between wetland areas and the creek area.
So, be in conflict with their own condition?
And the federal permitting requirements, yes. So, it's a combination of things, but in some cases, it's the permitting requirements that don't provide enough space, not just backyards of homes.
Do you know how much equestrian traffic really is out there using this trail?
I do not know.
Maybe the applicant does.
And so, the final slide is bringing the colored diagram up in case you have any questions.
Okay, we'll leave that up for a minute. So, let me turn to colleagues. Any questions of Leanne at this juncture? All right, Leanne, I just, I had one, and I had a chance to visit with the project applicant, and he'll speak here in a moment, last evening, and I mentioned this to Supervisor Kennedy as well. On the, on your map, it'd be on the left-hand side, as I'm looking at it here, up against the Sheldon Smedberg ball fields, and there is a great differential. It wasn't, I didn't see it was really very clear in the staff report, although I saw the mention about the retaining wells. But, in talking with Mr. Spillman last night, you could have a great differential from the school ball field side to some of those lots in that southern corner of maybe 10-foot or more, and obviously, those would be appropriately graded for drainage and such, but my point on all of this being that, I asked what sort of fencing would be there. The school has their typical, you know, cyclone fencing separates their property from the adjacent fields, and I guess neither we're going to have an upgraded wood fence. My thought is, we certainly hear from the applicant on this, but for something without much of a great differential, I guess a school fence will probably be well-maintained and in place. It seems to me on that western side, where you can typically get a lot of wind as well with an open area there, a wood fence, well-constructed or not, is going to have a certain lifespan. It seems to me we'd much better serve the residents, but certainly the interface between active ball fields and homes, which will have a great differential, significant in some cases, we'd better serve to have a split face or slump stone with some sort of cap on that as the defining boundary between residential and then active ball fields to the west there. So, I don't know, from a staff perspective, do you look at that? And if not, obviously, I don't expect to respond necessarily, but I'm going to ask Mr. Spillman when he comes forward.
Yeah, I would have to call up Cindy Scher, our project manager, to see.
Yeah, well, I'm curious, because looking at the interfaces, why, you know, did we take that into consideration? Hello, Cindy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, we did look at that, and we felt that a wall would be maybe too intrusive, having the single family, and since they were ball fields and not classrooms or administration buildings, we felt that between the great differential and some of the trees out there, there's some oak trees along that border also, that a wood fence would suffice. And then, the applicants here, if they want to contribute more to that explanation.
Right, right, we can ask them. Okay, so that was your analysis from a staff perspective?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that's like questions I had, so. By the way, I don't have anybody's time to speak on this. I'll invite the applicant up, if there's anyone here who wished to address this, certainly get a speaker form in. If not, I'll invite then the applicant to come forward, Mr. Spillman.
Mr. Natoli, I do need to have them do a statement of oath.
Okay, yeah, so anybody who intends on speaking on this, or think they might want to, please stand and be sworn.
Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Brian.
Good afternoon. Brian Spillman, Vice President of Silverado Homes, and I have been sworn. And it's my pleasure to be able to stand before the board this afternoon and present this project. It's a result of a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of reaching out to our neighbors, the school districts, and especially I'd like to thank Southgate Parks for their help and guidance and working through a lot of the issues that this project presented. And we feel like we've really checked a lot of the boxes in terms of getting a walkable, sustainable community. It is higher density, but that density comes at a value of being able to preserve and conserve a lot of the open space areas, and it does such in a way that really integrates the community and the trail systems, so that those resources can be appreciated, not from afar, but a little bit closer without intruding into the required buffers and setbacks foreluded to. But with that, there was a question, I think Supervisor Serna, on the equestrian uses out there today, that there isn't a lot of equestrian uses, because this part of the trail hasn't been developed wholly. I can anecdotally say that I've seen some equestrian use in the trails, on the portions of the creek, in the Fallbrook area, along Laguna Creek, and then working through, to lesser effect, to Camden, but it's a rare occasion. I do suspect as you get further to the east and to the more rural areas of the counties, that there may be a higher use of the equestrian trails, but the level of the traffic that we would expect, and with the trails we have designed here, we feel we have an appropriate separation. Yes, there are a few pinch points that we brought together to avoid some of the wetland areas, but it would be an easy thing for courtesy to allow one group pass and not have to intermingle with the others, and similarly, we brought the trails together at the proposed bridge crossing, where it's going to cross over to the creek, and it ventures onto the Bradshaw Christian side of the property. And if I just may comment, Mr. Chair, on the wall and the fence issue. Cindy alluded to, Cindy Scher alluded to it as well, that, you know, that fence that is there, existing, separating the two properties, there is some growth, the trees, there's some brambleberry bushes and stuff that are growing actually on the cyclone fence on the school district side, and we felt that the wood fence, a nicer, not a dog ear, but a nicer, you know, framed wood fence was adequate and suitable and appropriate for that border from a screening standpoint. Do you recognize that a masonry fence would be more durable over the long term? However, it is more costly. There does create some discussions that would have to take place likely with the school district to get onto their property and how we construct the footing, the keyway, and get the appropriate benches and so forth, but that's one just complication. It's not necessarily undoable, it does come at a cost, and some minor difficulty.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Brian. I guess I would just, I respectfully disagree with staff about being intrusive. I think I've seen that we have done right, particularly with some great separation and acknowledging some vegetation. Some of that may have to be affected by any construction that goes on out there. I don't know how much that's on the site, on school side versus on the Ogden Ranch property. And again, I think about the gramercy development...
wood fence was, was adequate and suitable and appropriate for that border from a screening standpoint. Do recognize that, that a masonry fence would be more durable over the long term, however it is more costly. There, it does create some, some discussions that would have to take place likely with the, the school district to get onto their property and how we construct the footing, the keyway, and get the appropriate benches and so forth. But that's one just complication. It's not necessarily undoable, does come at a cost, and some minor difficulty.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Brian. I guess I would just, I respectfully disagree with staff about being intrusive. I think I've seen that we have done right, particularly with some grade separation and acknowledging some vegetation, some of that may have to be affected by any construction that goes on out there. I don't know how much that's on the site, on school side versus on the, on the Ogden Ranch property. And again, I think about the gramercy development right at Calvine, Bradshaw, a different setting, obviously, but where that basically has, you know, a concrete or slumpstone fence, split face around the entirety of it. It's gated as well, much smaller, you know, compact site. But I think, you know, that has, you know, it, it looks nice, it works well, the landscaping was done nicely, and I just think the durability, and yet we don't require it in every case, but when I saw the grade difference, as we talked about last evening, it just seemed to me that the potential, not just for, you know, the active interface, but I think with winds and that open space being so forth, that over time you can see some degradation, and obviously it's a property responsibility, wouldn't be yours at that, at that juncture. So that was my thinking. So I guess we'll get to that when we talk about the conditions, but I appreciate your, your feedback and certainly the, and taking a look at that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other things you wanted to add, Brian, relative to that?
No, I do want to mention that our civil engineer, Dave Crissario, and one of the principals in the company, Paul Eblin, are also here in attendance today. They're saying from an engineering standpoint that I'm not equipped to answer. Dave is here to help as well.
All right. Anything they need to add at this point? No, okay, just available for questions. All right. Very good. Okay, I don't see any more questions of you at this point. I have no one signed to speak on this, so is there anyone here wishing to address this item? All right. If not, then I'll invite Leanne back up and invite Mr. Kennedy to offer his comments. Any else, Leanne?
I don't have any further remarks. I would note, condition number 11 is the fencing and landscaping condition, if you want to talk about that.
Okay. All right, I kind of stated my preference, and I, it just seems to me that there may be some added cost, but I think the durability, long-term viability of that interface would be improved by having, you know, that, that type of fencing versus the wood fencing. Well, leave it to the supervisor of the district to make a call on that.
Can I ask a?
Isn't this your district?
Point of clarification.
Isn't this yours?
No, District Two.
Just a clarification done. Was your idea or suggestion just a full replace or a, I think you said split face masonry, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But for the full, for like a full six-foot height or for the first three feet and then different material on top, or what was your?
For that six-foot along that, that western, so it would be along, it wouldn't have to be along the open space portion of that, but along what those lots are there. And I think for the, and, and Mr. Spillman could correct me, but in my, they're actually going to have a point where they're actually going to make some cuts about midway there, and so the elevation will be a bit exaggerated. I don't know that going north of there towards that, towards the Tillsis Parkway area that is, is quite as dramatic, but it just seems to me, if you're going to put it in there, go along that, along that entire line.
Are there other subdivisions out here where there, that kind of treatment exists between the, essentially the back of lots and a school property?
Well, there's not too many that back up to the school. I mean, you've got some, some, you know, some.
That's why I'm asking.
You know, you've got the, but you do have throughout that whole finished park area, certainly in the streetscape, you've got, you know, the slumpstone with the capstone and, I mean, you know, again, incorporated there. I used the one at, being the more recent one at Calvine at Bradshaw, again, a compact development on that Tenaker site where it was enclosed, and they initially wanted to go with a wood fence some years ago, and we said no because of the interface, and I think it provided, you know, good, good separation, but a good durability.
Can I, I'm, I'm curious to hear Supervisor Kennedy's sentiment on this, but I, could I ask the developer to come back up? I have a follow-up question about the fencing material. So I, I certainly appreciate, understand the additional cost involved in doing a, a masonry structured wall versus essentially a good neighbor wood fence. In this market, and I'm asking your opinion, in this market, is it possible that that additional cost, maybe not 100% of it, but maybe most of it, could be absorbed in the sales price of the unit? Because not every, not every unit out there is going to have a masonry rear fence essentially, right?
Correct. In fact, very few of them, that, that would probably be the only stretch that if we were to adopt this condition that would have a masonry rear. We do have some that were proposing with the combination fence with, with the kind of a lower seat wall and then view.
That's what I might, I asked earlier a question.
Right. But with that, it's, it's a different situation. The, the rear yards of these homes, you're going to be looking back up a slope or maybe a retaining wall at the bottom with a slope to the top. The, the extra cost of that would probably be something if I was on the sales floor and saying, hey, you got a masonry wall, you get to pay an extra $10,000, it probably wouldn't work that way. Wouldn't, in other words, you wouldn't recapture a premium by virtue of the wall versus the wood fence.
Even if the conversation went something like this, yeah, I'm kind of interested in that lot, but it backs up to a school. I wish there was something more.
Yep, and I think if it's a question of screening and privacy, I think both will achieve that, that purpose. If it's a question, maybe sound attenuation, which there's not a lot of activity at that portion of it, most of the sound will be coming from the Sheldon High School, the football stadium, which is a little bit further away, when necessarily, you know, achieve that, that intended effect. It would immediately though be something that would, would, in terms of longevity, would be more durable, would weather better. It's just a question of constructability, be, what would be my morsel in the cost, be my, my chief concern at this point, is how do we get in there and avoid the trees? And do we need any other encroachment or setback that we would have to bring the fence further into our property?
I, I know it's probably very difficult to assess at this point, but a masonry wall is going to be, what, probably good eight inches, 10 inches, right?
In terms of the thickness?
Yes.
Yes.
So offhand, are there, are there tree trunk diameter widths that are literally right on the line so that if you were going to put in the wall versus the wood fence, you'd have to remove trees?
It, we would be into the drip line into the, the root system unquestionably on, on that situation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Susan.
As long as you're discussing, discussing that particular issue, just my personal experience, a house that I most recently bought had as a masonry wall and a couple of things. One, I find it to be retain heat much more than a wooden fence, so the backyard is hotter. And when you do want to put hedging or trees up there, you've got the concrete footing that's in place for the brick wall, which extends out even past the bricks, so you lose additional.
You mean down below the?
Down below, yeah, in the footing, and so you lose additional, I have a small backyard, and so it's just something I thought I'd point out from my experience.
And I know the, the aspiring artists in the community have a preferred canvas, but I'll leave it there.
Well put. All right. Patrick.
Okay, so I'm going to chime in here if everybody, thank you very much. And I do want to thank also both staff and the developer. I've had many, many meetings on this project and probably the most meetings I've ever had on a project this size, but it's a unique project with the wetlands and so forth, the rural pools. So it looks like the only question out there right now that I'm hearing is whether or not there's a masonry wall or a fence there. And I just heard of the masonry wall this afternoon, and, you know, looking at, I agree with Supervisor Peters, and also looking at other examples of more urban settings in which houses are right up against schools. I mean, look at McClatchy and look at Callum Middle School, and, you know, these are all, the, the houses are right up to the ball fields and, and it's, they're all wood fences, and everybody's gotten along pretty well for a long time. So I, I think for all of the practical reasons and the added expense, I can't find a compelling reason, all due respect to Supervisor Natoli. And, you know, so I would be inclined to support the staff recommendation, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Leanne, anything else for the outline of the motion?
With regard to the continuance date, the board report actually requested an August date, but we have done counting and we can, the 30 days would be available for July 11th, and I believe there is space on that agenda. So I just wanted to correct the board report and potentially ask for July 11th at, I believe, flow 245.
Correct, 245.
All right, so that would be incorporated into the motion along with all the other entitlements that are included in staff recommendation, including the conditions of approval. All right, nothing further, then please vote.
Ms. Peters? Okay, so item 52, report back on flood protection act.
Can we go back to hedge?
Okay.
I do have a, yes.
No problem.
Just speak up, don't be shy at the podium.
Yes, sorry, I'm staying at the podium. I am extremely relieved to report that the original rezone condition, rezone sets of conditions for the hedge project did have the police CFD condition as condition number three. So that is in effect, so thank you for the time to figure that out.
Health and safety question answered for this staff.
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay, then.
And just for, for future reference, I did get an email from Susan Getz that the policy at that time was to add the CFD condition only for rezones, so not just for maps.
Okay. Very good. All right, with that then, we, I want to call the item again, flow, make sure we know that, just recall the item, because I'm going to make a motion on it, so.
Okay, so we are now taking action on item 50, the Hedge 22 Time Extension Project. It's a five-year extension of time for a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide 6.18 acres into 22 residential lots in the RD5 zone for a property located in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an addendum to the prior mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Okay, then I would move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thanks for a quick turnaround on that. All right, now, item 52.
Okay, now we're ready for item 52. It's the Report Back on Flood Protection Actions for the Community of Point Pleasant and to direct staff to proceed with various flood protection efforts for Point Pleasant.
Okay.
Now that it's clear that Leanne is not going to do item number 52.
I bet you would allow her to, though, huh?
Sure. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. This is a follow-up to a March 7th discussion that we had at the board regarding a number of flood issues with the community of Point Pleasant in, in general, in the vicinity of the Lower Gassoomness River. And the, the result of that was a request to come back today to discuss in more detail a number of items in relation to providing flood protection for the community of Point Pleasant. The staff report covers primarily three issues, and I'm going to, I'm going to talk through them somewhat briefly. I don't want to, I'm not going to read the entire staff report, I don't want to touch on what it covers and then really leave time for, for discussion and questions. But what the staff report covers is, it discusses, gives some more framework on proposed home elevation and/or home protection projects that could be funded with Beachstone Lakes mitigation funds. Discusses the idea that's been proposed of a Lambert Road, Lambert Road Bridge flood fight. And then it tries to address the status of the McCormick Williamson tract levees and where the nature conservancy project may be going on, on that piece of property. And so what I'll do is I'll just, again, run through those and then leave it for questions. The staff report lines out, so just, let's just go back. May 23rd, your board heard, actually approved acceptance of a FEMA grant for, I think, for, I think there were 49 or 50 structures that are proposed to be elevated. What the purpose of today's recommendation is, how would we fund home elevations in the Beachstone Lakes area with the Beachstone Lakes mitigation funds for project, for properties that wouldn't qualify for FEMA elevation? In other words, how would we operate a county-based home elevation or, or property protection program in the Beachstone Lakes area? So the staff report lines out some basic parameters for how we would envision carrying out such a program. Very, it would run very similar to how a FEMA grant program would work, 75% county, 25% local cost match, it's very typical. In addition, we would propose that the county would pay 50% of the owner's 25% share up to $12,000. And this would be for elevation or any of the projects that are listed in that table, which I'll speak to in a moment. The, it would propose that for any candidate for any of these projects that qualifies as low income according to state criteria, that the county program would fund their 25% share completely. We'd otherwise administer the program internally within the department, and we would follow general procedures mirroring the FEMA program in terms of, you know, the owner contracting with whoever might do the project, we provide reimbursements, documentation of causes, all, I, I didn't want to belabor this item with, with the details, but we, we do the, the program with FEMA grants, and we would, we would simply model it the same way, ensuring that we're, we're also following any of our own accounting and, and.
Are we offering any additional advantages then, and or considerations as a part of that?
The, aside from ensuring that, you know, permitting is, is going to be handled in a streamlined fashion through the permit office, and the ability to fund projects other than home elevation, those are, those are primary differences. FEMA grants wouldn't fund a flood wall, a berm.
Right.
Venting or things like that. So this, that's where this program would depart from a, from a FEMA-type program in that there are other options that would be considered for funding with the Beachstone Lakes funds.
Do you have a chart you could put up so people could see what, maybe follow along? I don't know if you, I see the one was in the staff report, I don't know if that's larger.
I don't, I don't have, I'll just, I can pull the one out of the staff report, I don't have a separate.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just going to, again, because you, you kind of described it, but it might be, if we can display that and see if we can pull it up.
So, and has, and as has been authorized previously by the board, we are, we have identified that a viable use of the Beachstone Lakes mitigation funds would be to fund home elevations, construction of berms or low walls around homes, and then additionally pay for venting. There are structures that actually, their, their floor is, is above the flood, the hundred year flood plane, but the, the foundation below is not vented properly in accordance with FEMA's requirements, so that's not recognized. Venting could be done in certain cases that would help improve the, the flood insurance status for those properties. But this table is, presents a range of projects and just their relative costs. These aren't exact figures, every, any project would, would have its own specific cost depending on the size of the house and, and where it lays. But the idea was to present the likely range of costs that, for projects that this fund could support in terms of protecting, you know, private residences, properties in, in the Beachstone Lakes area. A number of the elevation clearly would be the one that's most beneficial in terms of providing 100-year flood protection, as you elevate the home above the 100-year flood plane. The additional benefits of elevation would that, are that FEMA would recognize the elevation, and that would change the flood insurance basis for that property. Flood insurance would still be required, but it would be at the most basic rate because the, the home's floor would be above the regulatory flood plane.
Okay.
Flood walls and berms, again, those are physical barriers that could be constructed around a home to, you know, keep the water from getting in. The height would depend on where it's located within the flood plane. There would be some concern about going more than three or four feet high, but the idea is that this would actually provide some additional level of, of barrier to hold flood water back from getting in a home, not to 100-year level, and such a project would not be recognized from, by FEMA in terms of affecting flood insurance rates. So it would provide physical protection, but FEMA would not recognize that kind of project in terms of, you know, lowering flood insurance rates where that kind of is structured. But it does provide peace of mind in that there's, there's something that would hold the water back. And then again, venting is really a modification to a home that's already elevated, but perhaps doesn't have the appropriate venting within the foundation that would allow FEMA to recognize that the floor is actually above the flood plane. So this, this is intended to describe the range of projects, not, not the limited scope of projects that, that we would propose to fund.
Let me ask you, Michael, too, because when we had the meeting last summer. Let me ask you, Michael, too, because when we had the meeting last summer, yeah, it's been almost a year ago now, there, you'd had a couple of folks who at the time wanted to participate in either FEMA program and now obviously this iteration, they, I imagine they'd be interested, and they were, to put it mildly, were a bit frustrated because the whole idea about, I guess, cost benefit and some other things, and factors that frankly, I wasn't aware of that had been introduced into the program. And I, so I don't know how we resolved that, but I, in the sense of that's a FEMA piece of it, but with, with this, those folks are ready and willing.
Yeah, this, this wouldn't propose a benefit cost analysis.
Okay, so you're not going to get into that. I mean, that, that just compounded, I think, and frustrated a couple of folks who.
Right.
Were interested in previous hazard mitigation program participation and thought that they, you know, had submitted their paperwork, and I guess in one case they hadn't heard back and were pretty frustrated about that, but, so this would, again, you, but you talk about project prioritization, so how does that factor into the money that we have?
I, I have to include that there, because in theory, were we at a point where we had, you know, just a, a portion of the fund left.
Yeah.
And we had a number of projects that would be proposed, we would have to ensure, I would, the suggestion would be that we would focus on what provides the most benefit between the projects.
But then you are getting a benefit cost, though.
What's that?
Then you are getting into a benefit cost ratio of, of a different sort, of a larger.
In a way, and it, this is not a hard recommendation, this is something that's been suggested. At this point, we don't have anybody who's not on the, in the FEMA grant. We have nobody who's on the sidelines of the FEMA grant.
Okay.
With, you know, within the Beachstone Lakes area. So we're not in that situation, and I, and I would suggest that if we, if we are at a point where we were starting to get some, some hot and heavy use of this fund outside of a FEMA grant, then we would, then we would need to bring that kind of potential constraint back to discuss further.
All right, okay, very good.
So again, the 75/25 is the basic parameter. The 100% cost share again would be funded by the county through this program for any candidates that are, that are, meet the, the low and very low income criteria according to the state. The proposal does not, one, is not saying we're going to use all the money that are in the two Beachstone Lake funds for only these projects. It's not restricting the use to just these projects, nor is it saying we're, we're only going to use a certain portion of funds. It's saying this is within the realm of use for the Beachstone Lakes funds, but there are certainly a number of other things that, that I'll discuss shortly that also would be a potentially fund, receive funding from the Beachstone Lakes mitigation funds.
That's an important parameter to point out, I'm glad you did that, because I, I know I'd asked that question, but I think in light of some of the conversations, certainly about flood fight at Lambert and what that might entail relative to the physical investment, but then secondly, you know, the discussion about McCormick Williamson that you'll get to in a moment, too, and about some level of participation in that effort.
It's not meant to be mutually exclusive, it's, you know, this is just trying to put a little more framework around what has been discussed, you know, on, you know, briefly in the past for the board. Let's try to frame it up a bit more. If I had a candidate come in tomorrow who didn't qualify for a FEMA grant, we'd want to be able to move forward.
Right.
So this, that's the intent of this, of this aspect of the staff report.
Okay.
Let's switch to, let's speak to the Lambert Road flood fight item, and for the sake of discussion, it's always good to have a map. This is a map, actually, that came from the March 7th presentation.
Good.
And I've got, I've got a number of copies.
I think they were in our packet, I think, I believe they were in our packet. Yeah, we, we got them, Mike.
This one may not be in there, but.
Oh, no, yeah, we got different ones, yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, this one is, this is actually, came from the March 7th presentation, so I just carried it forward for the point of discussion. Shows the vicinity of Point Pleasant. So here's Point Pleasant Community. Here's Lambert Road and the Lambert Road Bridge, so when we're speaking to this, this aspect of the presentation, I just want to give some sense of where it's located. The proposal for a Lambert Road flood fight has been raised numerous times, and at the March 7th presentation, we had indicated that we would want to come back and provide some information on the potential, appropriately potential district, either Reclamation District or CSD, that, that might be able to carry out such an effort. But since then, and based on discussion we had at a meeting in Point Pleasant a number of weeks ago, I think it was clear that let's, let's figure, let's first define fully what the, and share with the stakeholders in, in the community what the impacts might be for, for a flood fight to, in fact, if anyone were to raise a, a linear barrier along the Lambert Road Bridge and on either side of the bridge, thus holding floodwater back, what could the potential impact be off-site to other properties? And modeling that's been done so far in regard to a hundred-year flood shows that be about a half a foot to seven tenths of a foot potential impact to the south near Reclamation District 1002. But what staff is actually doing right now, and they should have this completed in about two weeks, is actually, let's model what would the impacts be in a smaller event. In particular, let's look at the January and February storms, and if you've thrown a barrier up there, what might the, the implications be to, to other properties? And the intent of that is to take those results and then have a discussion again with the residents in the community, the folks who would, who might potentially be impacted, the other Reclamation District representatives, to simply vet that and have a good understanding of what that might mean. And then from that point, you can make a learned decision on whether this is something that we would want to move forward with, or to understand what the, the range of, of risk might be with such an action.
So with that timeframe, could you be back to us by late July, early August with?
I know you're going to try to push me. I, I mentioned August in the staff report because I think I want to make sure that we've got time to vet that information, but that would be the intent, is, is no later than August to come back with, with the results of, or completing our modeling, having that discussion with the community and with, with other stakeholders, and say, okay, this is what it would look like, everybody, and then from there, if.
Yeah, I think the community meeting was, was, you know, was well-attended. You had folks from certainly the Point Pleasant area, Walhoppy obviously was there, and other residents, you had folks from the Franklin Pond area, you had folks from 1002, which is shown on the map, Dead Horse Island, Tyler, and you had some state representatives there that represent some of the other areas in addition to that. Nature Conservancy, obviously McCormick Williamson was represented, Mr. Cosio was there. And it was, it was, it was a good discussion, and I think that one of the things I took away was that there was a recognition of during the flood fight of the common enemy, that being obviously the high waters and flooding, but also a clear desire by folks to have an understanding about what those impacts would be, whatever they might show relative to holding water at one point in order to try to retain some element of, of protection and what that might or might not do, at least under a modeling scenario. So if you can be back to us in, in that timeframe, and for us to then have our consideration this board, what we might do relative to formation of a district going forward, whatever that would take, I think that would be satisfactory, recognizing you're going to have the modeling done, he said, in two weeks, putting a community meeting together sometime in July, and then coming back to this board in early August.
Correct, correct. And, and the idea is, you know, not to, to keep moving this down the road, but if, if that kind of action's going to be considered, then I think it might, it's my suggestion that we want to make sure that we understand completely the impacts and benefits of that barrier so that, that it's, you know, eyes wide open if, if that were something that we would move forward with.
Okay.
But to do so in a timeframe that we can, you know, come back and, and make that decision with, with adequate heads-up before winter.
Well, and I think that the item needs to have as a part of deliberations for this board and consideration beyond whatever physical aspect would be, whether it's sandbags or some barrier or some trigger point, all that being somewhat understood, I think what sort of entity we would use to actually accomplish that, because that in of itself can take some time, and I could see us being into the next winter season before some of that might even, maybe not, because there may be some other simpler paths. I would ask, you know, certain kind of council, working with Water Resources, County Executive's Office to have us, whatever that menu of, and you touched on them very briefly in this, but that would be what I would be expecting, at least in, in, in the August timeframe, so.
And, and depending on what that recommendation might be, there could be a period where we, we do the, the simplest one first.
Right.
And then form something that's longer, longer term. I just, I'll just throw these out there, and until we, until we've had that vetting the community and come back, but I'm saying there's, I think there's options that we could consider, given the time constraints.
All right, Supervisor Peters.
I think, are you talking about bringing the entire item back in August, or just a section on Lambert Road?
Oh, the Lambert Road portion.
Okay. I just wanted to point out an experience that I had when I first came on this board, and Woodside, a neighborhood in my district, has a couple of creeks that run through it. There's a T-intersection there, right at Northrop Road, and Woodside flooded several feet. We had FEMA come in, offer the, this kind of split on the 75/25, no one wanted to do it. But the most interesting human nature thing that I observed was the residents of Woodside had prepared a barrier that went down north of, quite a long ways, and it was a, a rubber bladder that they filled with water, and it was several feet high. And there, of course, that's a very highly urbanized area, and so the people on the other side of, on the wrong side, if you will, of this barrier were extremely angry and gutted the barrier. They got rid of it, and they, they were very clear that they did not think it was appropriate that one side should have better protection than the other, at the expense of the other. Very difficult discussion, and it hasn't been done since, because it just, you know, kind of fell into the category of it isn't fair. It caused, it would have caused higher water levels on the other side, so.
Yep.
I mean, you're talking about wide-open country, I'm talking about urbanized area, but I think the human nature part is the same.
Yeah, it is. Well, I think there's relevance to what you say, though, that's upstream, downstream, where you are, and, you know, all the history that goes behind that, so it's.
Right.
Those conversations, I can assure you, are no easier in the rural areas than they are in the suburban setting.
And I think in this.
We were able to point out that if Woodside had been built under current standards, it would have had to have been elevated. You know, people.
Sure.
I mean, didn't know then, 50 years ago, that that was likely to be flooded, and every few years it becomes a possibility, and every 10 years or so it is an actual thing that happens, so.
And I'd, I'd point out, I appreciate the, the comments, because that is one of the reasons why we want to thoroughly vet the results of this analysis, but the, the settings in the Point Pleasant area distinctly different than, than an urban, there are a number of assumptions that you pretty well know what's going to happen in an urbanized setting. There's only about one, one way the water's going to come in. It could come from a myriad of, of directions in the Point Pleasant community, so even under a modeling scenario, it all, that all presumes that your assumed conditions are in place, otherwise it, it's difficult to protect.
Who takes care of it? Who puts it up?
Exactly.
And whose liability is it if it floods the people on the wrong side of the barrier?
Correct.
Yeah, well, the next part of this presentation, and then get to something where everybody can agree upon, we just got to figure if we can find the, the way to thread the needle and to work with the various partners, and you're going to touch on that.
Yeah.
But there is some general agreement about the next piece of this report back.
So the other report back speaks to the McCormick Williamson tract levees, and I'll just point to the map. Again, here's the Point Pleasant Community, here's Lambert Road, and you've got the McCormick Williamson tract, which is this area to the south. It's Reclamation District 2110. But this property is owned by the Nature Conservancy, and then the, this past winter, they experienced a levee breach, right here. But anticipating that, a number of the Reclamation District worked together and provided a relief cut at the downstream end of the tract, and sure enough, there was a levee failure upstream. So that provided some interim relief in terms of floodplain, floodplain elevations upstream. But now there's the situation, the decision for the Nature Conservancy is how to move forward, and I'll speak a little bit to that. Judah Grossman with the Nature Conservancy is here, just in case there's any questions regarding their projects, I don't want to try to overspeak for their intent or their, or what they're, they're proposing to do. But again, 2017, there was a levee break, the levee failure, and a relief cut was put in place. That island, that tract, call it an island, has had water in a sense, and it's currently being pumped. About four to six more weeks of pumping to drain the island completely. The whole idea of, the intent of the, of the Nature Conservancy's project out there was to construct levees on either side of the island that would allow flow through the island as part of a habitat restoration program. And then one of the side benefits of that would be some reduction in floodplain elevations for the general vicinity upstream of McCormick Williamson tract, including the Franklin Pond and, and the Point Pleasant Community, all depending again on what kind of storm you actually see and where the flows come from.
And it would have downstream potential.
Potential downstream benefits, too.
For dead horse and Tyler.
By holding off a surge from a, a much larger levee failure. The, so, so the Nature Conservancy finds itself in this position where the levees fail during the storm, and that they're at a decision point of, just from a financial standpoint, just from, as a landowner, do we, we want to just repair the, the breaks, the openings in the levees back up to their original height? That's one option that they could consider. The other option is to construct to a somewhat lower height an armored weir, not, not only the project they were proposing, but let's make the best use of those, of the existing break and the relief cut, and construct something that would continue to provide some level of flood benefit for the community. Going back to the first potential option, if they repair the levees back up to full height, clearly that eliminates the island from providing any flood benefit unless there's a catastrophic failure. So the Nature Conservancy is at a point where they're trying to decide what's going to make sense for their entity, raise the, repair the levees to full height, install something that's more stable and armored at a lower height, in, for an interim period until they're able to find a path to complete their, their restoration project and hand the island over to the state.
Mike, can I just supplement while you write that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to steal your thunder, I just.
No, no.
I know that Judah is in, in the audience today, and I appreciate his attendance on behalf of the Nature Conservancy, and I had a chance to talk to Jay Ziegler yesterday, I've talked with you and some other members of county staff. And I would just say that there's some other compounding factors here, too. They've got the KCRA tower that, obviously there's a lease there, they have, you know, need to have access to the tower, and I believe SMT has some facilities, either overhead of the power lines or other facilities in the, in the area that they need access to as well. I think, to your point, though, that what needs to be stressed here today, and why I think it's, it's, it has a relative urgency to it, is that as they pump the island out and they make determinations about, both from a cost standpoint, but from standpoint of, you know, where they are with Department of Water Resources, state obligations that may come with, you know, the acquisition that they made nearly 18 years ago, I guess now. And, you know, kind of going forward, but I can tell my colleagues here on the board that I've received, you know, some very, very strong and passionate pleas from folks that, basically, certainly they're, they're looking to the Nature Conservancy, but to anybody who will listen, that, you know, not, not to rebuild those levees to the height that they were pre-flood this year, that I guess about a 10-foot height, which would allow for that modulation of flows, allow for usefulness of the island during certain parts of season for farming, would provide, I guess, some flows down at the lower end, depending upon, you know, what was accommodated for, you know, wetter parts of the island, and then obviously have to deal with the access for folks that have a property rights for easements or access to their facilities. But, you know, they're, they're going to be at a juncture here in the next six weeks about what they do, and I think the county certainly could, you know, be, play a major role, a positive role in all of these discussions, because I think part of it is the costs, obviously, and, you know, what state was requiring for an endowment, and getting access to those facilities I mentioned a moment ago. But we'll hear from a couple of folks today, but I can just tell, I've heard from folks, and we, somebody may have seen letters that have come through from Diane Kirkham and from other property owners, basically pleading with this board to work with the Nature Conservancy and any of the other else that is party to this, to try to figure out some way to not build those levees back to that, the 19-foot height or 20-foot height, whatever they were pre them giving away in February of this year or so. I mean, there is some urgency, so I, again, you and I have talked a bit about that, and I don't know where we go next, certainly this board can give some direction, but I would. next. Certainly, this board can give some direction. But I would look to you, Michael, to kind of say, do we need to call a meeting of the parties? Do we need to, you know? And I think with the Beachstone Lake Fund, I'm just going to be very blunt about this, that there's some opportunity. If this buys a reduction from six inches to two foot of flood elevation reduction, depending upon the event and where those waters come from, that's a big benefit. And it would certainly serve Point Pleasant, but it would serve the folks in Tyler and Dead Horse, all county residents, people in Franklin Pond, District 1002, and basically, all the local area in the county of Sacramento, whether they be in the Delta and/or upstream. And if we can find a way to make this happen, something has been contemplated, not necessarily under these circumstances, but that was the whole idea, if we can help make that happen, then I think everybody would be better served. Otherwise, they build them back-
Correct, correct.
To where you were just, yeah, that's why I wanted to interrupt you right there at that point.
No, no problem. The staff recognizes, as well, the benefit that would exist if the levees were able to stay at a lower elevation, something that's identified as being appropriate to allow for the use of the farming and the other uses on the island. But that would provide some sort of regular assurance that there would be some volume that could be taken off into the island during a flood event. And I've had a couple of discussions with Judah Grossman already, in the context of how could we use Beachstone Lake mitigation funds to support, resulting in a condition where those levees are lower, so that the benefit will continue to be provided during the interim period until the Nature Conservancy is able to complete their ultimate plan project, and they see a path to hand that over. In the interim, we'd rather not have the levees full height. We'd rather have them stay some hybrid, in some sort of hybrid scenario where they're lower but armored. The intent and the recommendation is going to be that we're going to meet with any of the potential players, whether it be SAFCA, the owners of the broadcast towers, the Nature Conservancy, State DWR, and looking at if you can design an armored interim weir setup, then what would be some of the costs ongoing, recognizing that the island would flood more frequently than if the levees were fully raised, but that it could somehow be managed so that you can maintain a stable condition of those lowered weirs in the interim until their final project is established. That's where I want to go. So the discussions that I've had so far, it appears that there may be a path for us to do that. And again, it's basically four to six weeks is the window of time that the Nature Conservancy has before they have to start constructing one thing or another, because then summer's going to run out before we know it. So what we will do is call that meeting and have those representatives together. Let's look, what are the opportunities? And is there something that we could facilitate in the very near future? We've probably got about six weeks to talk about it.
Will you need any additional authorities, again, maybe something to think about, and maybe for NAV, too, as well? Is there any additional authorities in the event that, obviously, we'll be out of session for about a three-week period towards mid, end of this month? Obviously, you have certain authorities. And again, we have, but give some direction. Because they may come about very quickly, and they may need to have some commitment. It might require some urgent action, either by this board and/or you, NAV, or Michael, to make some commitments that, again, may still require board approval, whether they be fiscal ones and/or some policy framework. And so I just want to be sure that we don't miss it because we weren't in session.
I'm trying to reflect on the prior authorizations that the board has given in terms of, in general, how to use the funds, how they could be utilized for projects that benefit Point Pleasant. So I think we could get to the point where we could discuss-
And you could bring that to us next week, even. That's the other thing. We're in session next week. So if you needed some broader authorization, some more direction around a framework that gave this board some comfort-
That we could secure that opportunity without being bound by the board not being in session.
Yeah. Because I don't see if there's any disagreement, maybe with the exception of the water contractors downstream. And they can fight their own battle. They're fighting us all the time. Certainly, from a local perspective, flood, environmental, farming, residents, if there's any disagreement about how we ought to proceed with this thing, certainly in the interim period of time. So I think that this is an opportunity for this county, for our residents, for landowners, and certainly working in concert with TNC and anybody else who is involved, from state on down to all the landowners and rec districts and so forth, that we have an opportunity here to really buy some long-term relief. At the end, it doesn't solve the issue at Lambert Road nor issues upstream. But I think it begins to put in place a critical and a very important piece of the puzzle, and one we've talked about for a long time.
Well, I would certainly sit down with the county exec and Mr. Penrose, and just, let's just, and counsel, let's just make sure that if we identify any gap that we want to have filled, that we could bring something to you-
If you need some authorities, then come to us next week with that. So, all right. Michael, anything else you wanted to bring together on this? And I got a couple-
No, I mean, I think that's the highlights, where it's a very complicated setting. And we're trying to find ways to make some improvements in a number of areas. The opportunities with the McCormick-Williamson property is a new strategy that we're looking at. And it may potentially be the most beneficial of these. So anyhow, I have nothing else to share. And if there's others who'd like to speak.
Great. Well, thanks for your work and that of your staff. And again, I appreciate the effort you've put into it thus far. Okay, any questions of staff? If not, I do have two speakers that have signed up. I have Walt Hoppy and Wendy Wilkinson. Walt?
Chairman of the Board, members, Walt Hoppy, 11556 Fog Road, Elk Grove, California. I live in the community of Point Pleasant and been with this issue for about 30 years now. There's one thing, a member from TNC here, Mr. Grossman, is here now. And if he was going to make a presentation, I would like to have him make a presentation before I speak, if that's allowable.
Let me stop. I don't think you had any presentation-
Not just wanted to be available to answer questions.
Okay. Okay. So he didn't have a presentation, just available. Okay, Walt.
I only have a couple of things here. I thought at the March 7th meeting that by this meeting, we would be a little further along than what we are. I thought there would be some final recommendations that would be made today. But now I understand that that's kind of put off until sometime in August.
August 7th, yeah.
And I certainly hope that we do have some final recommendations by that date. One other concern that I have about this home elevation, and I think I've mentioned it before, we have a FEMA flood elevation of 18 feet in our area now. Since that elevation was established, FEMA has decertified the Sacramento River levee, which will bring that water into our area. And it appears that it will raise it somewhere between three and five feet. So until we know what that final elevation is, we really have no way of getting a handle on the cost of home elevations. We're talking about if, with those decertified levees on the Sacramento River, the homes will have to be elevated from six to eight feet. So that really makes them a two-story house. So basically, the existing foundations, I'm sure, on all the homes will not be adequate. So there will be an additional cost of building new foundations for, and the structure itself, to support the existing home at that elevation will have to be substantially increased just to support that additional weight and wind loading. And so until we get a handle on what FEMA is going to do and what the flood elevation is in that area, it's very difficult to get a handle on what the costs are going to be. And also, whether you want to elevate your house that high. If it's elevated one or two feet, it's one thing. But if you start elevating houses, so you become a two-story structure, and that's your living quarters, then us old folks got to climb those stairs or find some way to get up there, have handicapped access or whatever to get up there, because there's a lot of elderly folks in that area. And that's a concern. I just don't know where that's at. I don't know that anyone here at the county knows where that's at, because FEMA, I don't think, knows where it's at. And it's a crazy issue. We certainly, back to the McCormick-Williamson tract, we certainly don't, are opposed to them building their levee back to the full height. That parcel was purchased with the intent to be used as a floodway. And between whatever goes on in the public realm, that didn't get that accomplished, and now to put it back after it fails to its full height seems to be a great waste of public money. The public purchased that property back in, I guess it was 1999, for 5.6 million, to be used as a floodway, recognizing that it helps both the upstream and downstream areas, Interstate 5, the Consummate East Correctional Center, plus all the residents in that area. And now, that seems to be falling apart.
We're going to try to help bring it back together, Walt. We're going to try and help bring that together.
I certainly hope so. So basically, that's the two issues I had. One is the final flood elevation that we're dealing with, and McCormick-Williamson. Obviously, the Lambert Road-
Lambert Road, right.
Barrier is certainly a concern to us, too. I thought there'd be a little more on that here today, but-
August 7th.
I guess we'll wait till August.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your help and work out there, too. Okay, then the other speaker I have is Wendy Wilkinson. Wendy? Last time Wendy was here, and her house was underwater.
You guys remember me?
Yes, we do, Wendy. Good to see you.
Thank you. I actually don't really have too much to say, but said all of my comments. Just since I am here, I'll let you guys know what's going on. We were waiting to do any construction to our house, waiting for the FEMA grant. That still has not gone through, as you know. So it was April, then it was May, now the proposal deadline's now June. So we started to go ahead and move forward with building our house. Just to give you guys a little quick update, working with our general contractor, a very rough estimate of elevating our house. And we are looking at having to go up at least six feet to get up above the railroad tracks. A really rough estimate cost for the bare minimum of elevating that much is looking at $160,000, $170,000. And that's still not putting up walls or any decking. So just to give you some cost figures.
Wendy, I'm curious, have you been working with our folks here?
That's really the only thing I kind of got up here to say, is I have been working with Sac County, with George Booth and Liz Carrington. And they've been amazing. Every question we've had, they've answered in extremely timely manner. They've provided us a lot of information to give our insurance companies. So I'd like to give a big shout out and thank you to them.
Well, thank you. And hopefully, you get your house rebuilt. Hopefully, we can find a way to help you get elevated. And there are some other things we're talking about here.
And the county personnel's been great.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Good luck to you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, those were the two speakers. Anyone else wish to address this item today? All right. Thank you all. With that, then we have recommendations. And I would move the staff recommendations with the understanding we'll be back first meeting in August. Is
Our first meeting in August is August 8th.
Okay. All right. So we'd like to move this to August 8th for the report back on the Lambert Road and the flood fight information there. And then McCormick-Williamson, we'll give direction. If there's anything you need, additional authorities in order to work with Nature Conservancy and all the players between the time we go to recess and come back, then you'll come back to us next week with that. Otherwise, you get sufficient guidance.
That's correct.
Okay. And then in addition to the staff report, just that you could come back if you need to. So, all right. Then that's the motion?
Second.
Okay, moving second and then. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Judah, for being here. Let's see if we can make it happen. Thanks. Okay, your next item, and I know we have special guests in the audience, Secretary of State's here on the next item as well, is our voter registrar. So maybe we can do a brief introduction, so at least get the item on the table, and then we'll invite our, just go ahead and introduce the item, though. Don't do the whole presentation. We'll invite the Secretary of Media to call the item first.
Item 53, request to approve vote center model elections in Sacramento County beginning in 2018, and authorize release of request for proposal for replacement voting system.
Okay, thanks. We had heard this item. We've got a lot of information you're going to get into, but in certain light of the secretary's schedule, we allow him to speak. So did you need introductory comments, though?
No, I'll go ahead and let him go first.
Okay, very good. Secretary? Welcome.
Good afternoon. Members of the Board, Mr. Chairman, Jill, thank you for letting me leapfrog here a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Am I out?
Thank you for a couple of minutes to address you on this exciting, not just important, but exciting agenda item before you. And I really want to thank the leadership of your registrar voters, Jill Levine. She's been working hand-in-hand with us to not just increase voter registration numbers in Sacramento County, and increase voter participation, but even helping us improve the voter experience. And I think that's the exciting opportunity you have before you, the result of the California legislature having passed, and the governor having signed the California Voters Choice Act last year. The goal of the act is to provide voters with more choice of when, where, and how to cast a ballot. And while last year, we actually broke a lot of records here in California, there's now more than 19.4 million registered voters statewide. In Sacramento County alone, that's 770,000. Sacramento County alone added 100,000 new voters since 2014. So we're making significant progress on the registration side. On the turnout side, equally impressive. A million more ballots were cast last November than in 2008, the previous high watermark for the state of California. Sacramento County beat its 2008 record by 30,000 votes. So we have a lot of excitement. We want to keep the momentum going. And while we have a lot to be proud of, the fact of the matter is there's about 400,000 eligible citizens in Sacramento County who have either not registered or have registered but not voted. And so that's the work that we have cut out for us. And with your vote today, we can not just make a dent on the registration side of things, but on the even more important part of casting a ballot. When we give voters the choice of when, where, and how to cast a ballot, make it more convenient and improve their experience, we know that turnout will go up. The vote center model that you're being asked to consider today will do exactly that, giving voters the option of voting on election day if that's their choice and what's most convenient to them. But if it's more convenient to vote early, in person, or over the weekend, vote close to home, if that's the most convenient location, or frankly, any voting location in the county closer to work, where we drop our kids off at school, the grocery store, the shopping mall, whatever it is, that's what this new model will allow for voters if they didn't vote by mail to begin with. And we're even making it easier for folks to vote by mail, because that's probably the biggest and fastest-growing trend for voters here in Sacramento and throughout the county. Anywhere in other jurisdictions, other states where these reforms have been implemented, we see turnout go up. Elections administrators actually see some savings involved in the process. And just happier voters, based on that experience, so that, I think, is the ultimate win-win-win, and encourage and ask for your support of this item. Here to answer any questions. But again, working hand-in-hand with Jill, it's been exciting to draft the legislation, get the legislation passed. And I think Sacramento County can show some statewide leadership in being the first and the biggest candidate moving in this direction.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We have a couple of comments. Mr. Cern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you, Mr. Secretary, for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us here in chambers this afternoon. I think it means a lot to us and impresses upon the public in general how important this is when you take the time to walk a few blocks from your office here to explain in greater detail what's before us. I guess the question I have for you is, it's a general one, but what do you think is- what do you think is probably the best lesson learned so far in other parts of the country where voting centers have been used that, again, kind of underscores why what's before us deserves our affirmative support?
Yeah. I mean, I think the legislation that was passed is built on both the experience from other jurisdictions, but also trends that are already happening in California, whether we realize it or not. You know, first and foremost, building on the popularity of vote by mail. We've had several cycles now where 60% plus of the ballots cast statewide are people voting by mail, right? So, we've gone from, once upon a time, you couldn't vote by mail, you had to show up, and then you could vote by mail, but you had to have an excuse, to no excuse vote by mail, to now you can sign up to be a permanent vote by mail voter, right? This continues to be the trend in Oregon, Washington, Colorado, others, the states with higher levels of participation are the ones that automatically send ballots to the voters. So, that's sort of, you know, one foundation of it. We also look at, you know, two other elements. While more and more people are receiving their ballot by mail, you can fill it out at home without being rushed, you know, whatever it is, the number of people mailing it back through the postal service, it's kind of growing, but you have more and more people wanting to physically drop off that ballot. I know Sacramento County hasn't been required, but has chosen to do the ballot drop box opportunity throughout the county with a lot of success. Or people who walk in on election day and drop their ballot off at the polling places. So, vote centers can accommodate that and actually embrace that experience. But for the 40% of people who still want to vote in person, we can provide a better, you know, quality experience for that through, you know, flexibility of not just election day, but, you know, 10, 11 days up to and including election day, and the geographic flexibility of doing it anywhere in the county. So, it's more convenient and therefore higher levels of participation through the Vote Center model. We can kind of professionalize the experience, too. We're still going to need some volunteers, but the more experienced veteran volunteers coupled with, you know, some Elections Division employees to be able to better answer questions for voters, provide the in-language support for the people who need it. It's just, you know, honestly, best practices wrapped up into one and some savings to be realized along the way.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you for your leadership on this issue and certainly for being here today. Is this your first time in our chambers, or you've been...
It is, it is. I've been...
Welcome back.
I've been paying taxes here for many years.
Well, you own part of the building, so, anyway. Anyway, we appreciate your leadership and work, and certainly working with our registrar and those across the state, and your legislative leadership on this as well. And we're going to be taking up some questions and the information coming back from our discussion a couple of weeks ago. I know your staff was here then, and we anticipate taking an action here shortly this afternoon. So, you're welcome to stay.
I'll take a seat for a few minutes. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Ms. Levine?
Yes, I'm not quite as tall. Thank you. Okay. Jill Levine, registrar of voters for Sacramento County. And I was here on May 24th and made a presentation to your board on our current system and the need for a new voting system, and then the opportunity to move to a Vote Center model and an all-mail ballot. You had several questions at that time, and so you asked me to come back, and so I have. And hopefully, your questions have been answered in the board report. You asked about the maps, and we have provided you with larger maps with the street names on. Just as a caution, these maps will continue to change as, you know, the demographics change, more people vote, more people register, that type of thing. This is only a starting point for the data, and we will be seeking community input before we make any selections for a Vote Center. You also asked about the survey, and you asked for it to be cross-tabbed by district. That was included as an attachment to the board report. You asked for an implementation of the timeline. That was included in the board report. It is a very aggressive schedule. We don't have much time before, actually, less than a year now before the next election. But we've got kind of two prongs going here. One prong goes towards working on the RFP to actually develop it and to review the responses. And the other prong is moving towards the outreach and voter education part of this. Another question was on the postage cost. And as stated, the Voters' Choice Act does not require Sacramento County to pay for postage, but we could choose if you would like to. You asked me for an estimate for a statewide election, and that's about $300,000 per statewide election. But just to remind you that insufficient postage is paid by our county, and we work with the United States Postal Service to make sure that no ballot gets left behind. The cost of that is between $500 and $1,000 per election. A cost for a Vote Center. The estimate for the $4 million for the Vote Centers was the basic minimum of what we needed. And you asked if you wanted to add a few more Vote Centers, about how much that would cost. And that would be between $14,000 and $17,000.
Per location?
Per location, correct. Also, you asked for a comparison of the estimated cost. We wanted them to be compared from the Vote Center model to the polling place model. And then we broke it down even more as leasing versus buying it outright. So, that's all broken out in your report, too. So, those were the questions that you asked. If you have any additional questions, I am be happy here to answer them.
Okay. Well, thank you for the quick turnaround for the mapping and for the responses. And do you have some questions by board members? Supervisor Peters?
Thank you, Jill. This information was much, made it more clear in my mind, particularly had the comparison between renewing what we have and going to the Vote Center. One of the questions that I think I asked you years ago, so I probably know the answers, on the vote by mail postage. The question is, can you print on the envelope how much the postage is? I know whenever I vote by mail, I'm thinking, is this one stamp, or two, or three? And I know the county pays for the difference if I don't put the right postage on it, but...
Can we?
Remind me of your answer.
Yes, we can print on the envelope, but we order those envelopes in bulk, and we order them way ahead of the election to get the best deal and get kind of that particular purchase out of the way. So, when we order envelopes, we usually order them for the June and November election. Now, this time, the June ballot had two cards, where the November ballot had three cards. So, if we had pre-printed the cost of postage, we would have been wrong. So, we can either include in the, with the ballot, the cost of returning it, or make sure we have an insufficient postage account set up, just in case.
Could you print, two cards is 42 cents, and three cards is...
We just, we usually include a flyer saying how much the postage cost is, and then we make sure the media helps supports us with that.
I think most people can afford to put a stamp on it. They'd just like to know they put the right amount on.
And we get that question a lot, yes.
That's really the only question I have.
All right. Other members?
Yes, Supervisor Frost?
So, Jill, I wanted to thank you also for the information. It really helped me also to kind of see where my district stood. And after receiving the full survey, I kind of, I learned that my district is heavily opposed to the Vote Centers because 48% wanted traditional while 33% wanted the Vote Centers. And I also looked in the survey for something that would indicate whether or not those who are in my district who weren't, you know, maybe comfortable with the Vote Centers might be comfortable if we did educational outreach and they learned more about it. And the problem that I saw in the survey was that there was no question that, there was a question that asked, would you be inclined to vote for the Vote Center after learning more about it? But there wasn't a question that said, would you now vote for it? And the question of, would you be inclined, is a big difference from, would you vote for it? And so, I also went to my district, and I talked to people, and there were some, there were a lot of people who had concerns relating to fraud. And so, all that being said, I wanted to just ask my colleagues if, and throw out to you to see if you would consider including some requirements if we go to the Vote Center model, because I'm not sure I can support it based on where my district is at. And oh, by the way, I'm a vote by mail person, so, and I have been for years, and I prefer it that way. So, this is not personal. It really has to do with me representing my district. But I wonder if we can put some requirements on the Vote Centers. And I've got five requests, and that would be to require background checks on the poll workers and require an under penalty of perjury contract of all employees at the registrar of voters and the Vote Centers. I guess in San Joaquin County recently, there was a case of two staff who worked for the camp, for a campaign and who were also counting ballots. And so, that would be number one. Number two would be prohibit contracting with nonprofits or other organizations that engage in political action of any form. In some states, contracts have been given to political groups to staff Vote Centers, and so, that seems like a conflict of interest. Number three, prohibit hiring of temps who work for a candidate's campaign or political parties or political organizations. And number four, require the county to make the same provisions for observation that apply to recounts, provisional ballots, et cetera, for the Vote Centers. In other words, make meaningful provisions where people can come in and watch the counting. And then, number five would be institute severe penalties if any of those violations are, if any of those are violated. I can provide a copy of that to you if you want, because that was quite a bit.
Okay, good. Some of that will be code changes, and actually, a lot more than, I think, just Sacramento, so I'd have to look into that. And there has been a ruling on background checks. I'll have to get that back to you because of the cost issue and a few other rights issue. And so, I'll have to check with the county council on that. And looking at your survey, after the cost was, you know, after the vote, the people in your district heard about the cost, they did want the Vote Center if you add that factor.
Actually, they, if, the way I read it, it said, are you now more inclined? The question, you are, are you more inclined in a survey? You could ask me, you could say to me, Sue, I'll give you $100 if you'll go to Monterey rather than San Luis Obispo. Would you be more inclined to go to Monterey under those circumstances? And I could say, yes, I'd be more inclined, but that doesn't really mean I'm going to go. Do you hear what I'm saying? It's a different question in my mind in a survey. That's not a, that's not something that constitutes, you know, a meaningful answer. So, those are my, those are my comments and requests.
Okay. Just, we have other members of the board, but so, what about any of the other items that she outlined, Jill, like prohibiting contracting with political groups?
Campaign workers.
Yes, right. Hiring of temporary workers that work with somebody else. I guess you have to self-declare that they do or don't, and then, you know, basically hold them to that, I guess, right?
Yes. That I don't think will be an issue. So, you know, we can make that part of the hiring process, so.
Okay. With your poll workers, do you do that now? Are poll workers allowed?
Poll workers are not allowed if they are working for a campaign, a candidate or working for a campaign.
And that's usually, that's for a one-day stand, where these would be for 10, 11-day periods?
So, for the 11-day stand, it would just be a requirement for them.
But self-determined, self-determined?
Self-determined, yes.
But in the event somebody called them out on it, what's the penalty, I guess, to Supervisor Frost?
We just, we fire them. At this point, there is no...
I guess that's pretty severe, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. Supervisor Cerner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm curious to hear your thoughts. I don't know that you've chimed in yet, but I'm prepared to make a motion to support the staff recommendation with the suggested, and only the suggested change or clarification that if you're working for a campaign, because we'll have extended days of voting, that the rules that we have apply now relative to prohibiting that conflict for a single day applies to all the days.
Second?
Okay. All right. Was there any questions you had, Ms. Frost? I know you were, okay, relative to your points. Well, I would just weigh in on the motion. I certainly thought a lot about this, and I know that there's going to be some folks who will be upset that they don't have their polling place right in their neighborhood on election day. I've heard that as we've consolidated precincts, and I guess, I think I spoke to the last hearing. Actually, we had one gentleman who I met with, and Jill was kind enough to kind of explain to him with consolidated precincts and so forth, why polling places move from election to election depending upon who's conducting elections for what districts and so forth and so on. And I've heard from others that are pretty vehement, who, again, find that traditional pathway. They don't vote by mail. They very much want to, on election day, go in and cast their ballot, which they'll still be able to, obviously with a Vote Center, but it will be probably more distant potentially than where they currently vote. I would just say, I think that when it comes to Vote Centers, that, and we kind of talked about this a bit the last hearing, that in some of the areas that are more rural and outlying, they may not have the densities. And I know that kind of the sensitivity map that was done here, I do think it's important from an accessibility standpoint, vote by mail or not, that we, you know, look at community areas and that we place them appropriately, because there are some costs associated with that. But I would hate to see, for example, in the, you know, far south counties, you get one Vote Center for, you know, all those communities. They may not total anywhere near a suburban neighborhood even, but I still think it's important for that accessibility and the visibility that goes with having a location where, certainly as Mr. Secretary pointed out, but you'll have a period of a week, a week and a half or longer to go to, but that that be visible. I trust we'll be able to work with maybe, you know, schools or fire stations or some places that have the, obviously, the accessibility relative to ADA and some other things, and, you know, can accommodate the voters who come from all, you know, ages and all walks of life, obviously. And so, I think this will probably take some getting used to for some folks. And I think looking at percentages certainly in District 5, that, you know, about 25% of those are pretty, you know, pretty cemented in the traditional way of voting. And given a choice, it's going to be, you know, deliver that ballot on election day, or go cast my ballot on election day at the voting precinct in my neighborhood. So, it'll be a bit of a change. But I think, looking at certainly the models that are presented to us, the costs associated with maintaining that more traditional model, and, you know, certainly not discounting voter turnout and the encouragement, and certainly having more time in people's busy lives to contemplate and to cast their ballot. I think that, you know, the recommendation you bring us is one that's certainly prudent in that respect, but it also provides for, you know, the opportunity for voters to have a couple of different methods to cast their ballot. And I think, I guess, lastly, I would just say that the security of the ballot itself, people having that level of confidence, the integrity of the election process, obviously, you know, job you're sworn to do, Jill, you and your staff, even to Supervisor Frost's comments, that's essential, that, you know, it's one thing to have a great turnout or to have, you know, high registration numbers and, you know, to do better than the last election cycle. But if we ever were to lose the confidence of the electorate or portions of the electorate as it relates to the integrity of the election process, the sanctity of their respective ballot, but also that of their friends, neighbors, opposing viewpoints, whatever it may be, then I think then the whole system begins to crumble. So, I think whatever we do, those safeguards will be built in, whether it's the personnel that are hired temporarily, whether it's the personnel who are there permanently, whether it's the software or hardware that we employ. All of those things, in my view, are critical pieces. And again, we have some limitations, obviously, in our ability to make sure that all those pieces are exactly what we would want them to be from the standpoint of the election integrity. But to me, that's the most critical piece, certainly the accessibility and being able to cast your ballot. But also that, once you've done that, that to know with a great degree of certainty, if not total certainty, that your ballot is going to be handled in a way that there's not going to be, you know, it's not going to provide for tampering, for it to be lost, or to be discounted, or miscounted, or whatever it is. And again, that's obviously with our secretary and you, that's what you're committed to. But that, to me, is most key. So, whatever process we take on, and obviously, what we do here today, will reflect in an investment of tax... investment of taxpayer dollars, but also of time and effort. And I just, but that integrity needs to be the, the bottom line, because that's, that's the faith and trust that's placed in all of us, so.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion? Then we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation, any other comments about that? If not, then please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay. All right. You'll keep this updated periodically. This is going to be a major undertaking, so can we, can we get quarterly reports back on kind of how things are going? I don't think, so it doesn't necessarily be an agenda item, but I do think as we're, I see the time schedule here and that's going to be pretty aggressive.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Secretary, thank you for being here. Okay. All right, we have another item, if you'll call that, please.
Okay. Item 54 is the Urgency Ordinance, Accessory Dwelling Units and Urgency Ordinance to amend Chapters Five and Seven of the Sacramento County Zoning Code relating to accessory dwelling units due to recent changes in state law.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director.
Good afternoon.
We are here with an urgency ordinance in response to changes in state law that were made effective earlier in the year. Staff's initial assessment was that our ordinance was compliant with state law. However, upon further evaluation, we concluded in consultation with county council that were, there were a number of changes that needed to be made. We have targeted these urgency ordinance changes solely to provisions to bring us into compliance with state law. They have to do with replacing our definition with one that precisely matches that in state law, addressing requirements in state law that allow conversion of existing space in either a home or a non-residential accessory structure into an accessory structure, treating attached and detached units in a similar manner, because they are different now in our code. And then finally, addressing parking requirements of state law, which are essentially reducing or eliminating our current code parking requirements. Staff is undertaking a more comprehensive review of our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we will intend to return to the board with a additional proposal for further changes. And we will do that after getting stakeholder and community input. However, that will take us some time to do. And so we would request that you adopt the provisions today as an urgency ordinance, and then we will bring you back a more comprehensive ordinance review.
Okay. Thanks, LeAnn. Supervisor Peters?
I would move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay. I may have a motion in a second. I did want to ask a question about what you're going to come back with. And the reason for that is that I'm concerned that even as we speak, that some of these conversions may or may not be occurring. And I would just ask, as you look at this, that, that particularly in some of the rural areas of the county where, you know, it may be unknown to us in some cases, but where we, people are, we had some, you know, expansion in the code that allowed for accessory dwellings to have, you know, particularly in ag rez parcels, to have more square footage. And I guess when it comes to conversion to some of those units, again, we have some building regulations, but, you know, I know that we've got a couple pending concerns in, in a couple of communities I have. So as you look at this beyond just what happens in the suburban setting, look at those rural areas where we actually, with our zoning code, as you're well aware, LeAnn, we did some broadening, allowed for double the square footage for certain things. If people were to convert that, you could have, you know, you know, the accessory could be bigger than the, the primary by double the size. And I'm not saying that's happened yet, but.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to just, as you're looking at this.
We will be taking a very comprehensive look clearly in our zoning code update. We did one approach and now we need to rethink that.
Right.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
We will be returning back for a second reading in July likely.
Okay, in July.
Mention that as well. And we did look at the 24 projects that we processed in fiscal year 1617. None would have been processed differently, although we do have one building permit going through now under this new state ordinance.
One other comment, because we spent a lot of time talking about conversions of garages and people turning them into either daily or weekly rentals and carving them into rooms and, you know, some of the specifications there. This, again, maybe takes us in a different direction, at least partially, and I think we need to take a look at that, because we're trying to cover in some neighborhoods where people had taken liberties, either permitted or not, and we're causing issues. And I'm concerned that, you know, this can maybe reopen some of those doors, too.
Yes, this will be a higher priority for us.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Motion in a second. Anyone here wish to address this item? Seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Getting down towards the end of the agenda here. Nominations?
Okay. Item 55 is a recommendation to remove members from the Adult and Aging Commission for failure of participation pursuant to the bylaws of the commission.
So move?
Okay. Motion, second. Second, Chairman, second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And now we're ready for your nominations. Item 56. We are, you are continuing to July 11th, the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. You are continuing to July 25th, 2017, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands, Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, first is the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. Mr. Natale?
Yes, the chiefs have interviewed and they're recommending Ariel Torone and continue the remainder to August 8th, 2017.
Okay. Next, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Again, the chiefs have interviewed. Their recommendation is, is that for the Child Advocacy Group, that Catherine Andrew be nominated and appointed and continue the remainder of these to August 8th as well.
And then Supervisor Frost, we have Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to July 11.
Okay. Next, we have the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to August 8.
Okay. And you had two of those seats. And then Ms. Frost?
Continue to August 8, please.
Okay. Sacramento, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
I'd like to nominate Virginia Jamison.
Okay. And then Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to July 11.
Okay. And that concludes the nominations.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. All right, we'll go to county exec comments.
Ms. Chair, members of the board, next week, starting June 13th at 9:30, we have our budget deliberation. We have reserved 13th, 14th, and 15th if necessary. In the afternoon of the 15th, at 1:00 PM, we did put an agenda item, which is the selection of an assessor. As we came to you a couple of weeks ago, it's a public process to pick an assessor with the current assessor retiring. There are three applicants that we got application from, and the public is more than welcome to view those applications at, at Clerk of the Board's office. So that's at 1:00 PM on June 15th.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay. For the schedule, for, when will we have the schedule out for the board hearings on the budget?
By, by this Friday. On which departments and the sequence?
Right, yeah. What sequence, so people can know. So you only have until Friday? You have any idea at this point?
Basically, who we're looking at presenting is sheriff. We understand the DA wants to present. Parks, we have animal care, and DHA, which is the main homeless component. So we're trying to figure out what time, which date, we want to have those in. If I can get it done prior to Friday, I'll get to, get to notice out sooner.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to be clear, I heard what I heard. We won't know until this Friday, when the various agencies you just outlined, what date or hour of what day?
Hour and date.
Okay. Any, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if we can let the public know sooner, sooner than that.
No, I absolutely want to strive to that. I just have to finish the budget message when I get upstairs. And then our tradition has been, is that we do county exec comments at 9:30. After that, we do law enforcement. And depending on how much presentation is needed, we tend to reserve the next day for Health and Human Services. And that's what I'm trying to stage, is most of this budget has a lot of initiatives in DHA, which is in the homeless component.
Sure.
That's the date that I'm trying to figure out. Tuesday afternoon, or do we go Wednesday on that?
If you'll indulge me and my colleagues, I'd like to suggest that, and you may already be moving in this direction, NAV, that this year we take Parks and DHA on the same day.
Got it. Any objections to that? Okay, all right.
And I just wanted to ensure, we are going to hear DHHS.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. All right. It's going to sound like a big hole.
Got lost in the alphabet there.
And, and again, just, you know, I haven't seen your budget recommendation. You and I have talked pretty frequently, but I would say on the animal care aspect of that, we've had some markers out there and, you know, we're, we're not hitting the markers. And I guess, I know you've given some direction, but I don't know that positions have been, even with current budget have been filled and so forth now. And so again, just anticipate that, again, I have held my peace for a few months here, but that's a bit of time. I know you're going to report back on Spain-Neuter, but I would just say that as to markers to get us to that 90% performance measure, when we're, you know, this past month, we're at 67, I think that we've got a long ways to go for all the way that we've come. And I won't get into any more than that before budget, but I just, I want to give you a heads up. I know we've talked and again, I appreciate some of the initiative that you've put into that. But my expectation is that in 1718 year, we're going to get a lot closer to that mark than we got this past year. And it's going to require, I think, us to do some things more than what we've been able to do thus far. So I just kind of heads up. I know you're putting your letter together and, you know, maybe we'll have some pleasant surprises in there, but I think that, you know, certainly the proof of some of that is in the, in the numbers and, and we've got some challenges there, so. Any other than suggestions for budgetary items?
Just want, I want to confirm that the CEO's recommended budget's going to come out no different in terms of timing for the public versus a regular board hearing. So it'll be this Thursday afternoon roughly?
I'm planning on getting it done by Thursday morning. If I can get it done tomorrow evening is trying to get, get it out.
All right. I like that.
So has it been published yet, though? Because you have to publish the documents, so is it, is it being published as we speak or what?
No. I mean, the one that needs to be published is the final budget now. That's the 10-day requirement in September.
Well, we used to have a preliminary, that whole, so we don't have that whole big?
No, we, we're going to have a whole budget that's coming out. That's what we're publishing right now.
Yeah, you are. So you, as we just said, you are publishing that now.
Oh, absolutely. Now, there's going to be a budget letter that's going to have all the attachments, as it did last.
Yeah, right.
And then there's a whole budget document that's going to be in a companion and document with it.
And then you've got all the other things that we want, the position, control and all that?
That's all, that's all the budget document. And one other thing that is, since we're talking about budget, and I had mentioned this when I did the briefings, is that on this agenda, in the past, you would have had about 30 contracts, putting stuff in place for next fiscal year. And I heard the board loud and clear on this one, that you all felt like that's kind of putting the, I think the expression we were using today, the cart before the horse here. And what we're going to wait is have the budget deliberation done, and whichever day we get to the, doing the budget, then the consent item with all those contracts will be in front of you for you to adopt those.
Can I, can I make one observation and suggestion that's probably already been implemented by our CEO? But I thought last year, NAV, at least I really appreciated the way you distilled down the understanding, kind of how the Russian dolls are nested, if you will, in our budget from, starting with an all-funds budget, our general fund, noting which agencies are enterprise funds, they're, you know, separate revenue generating entities, and then, and then within general fund, net county cost. I think it's, it's not only easier for us to understand it in those, those terms, but I'm always very concerned with my constituents who are trying to, you know, rightfully monitor what we're doing and understand the lexicon of, of Sacramento County budgeting. But I think when you, you keep it at that level, it's, it's helpful across the board for everyone.
Page two of the budget letter will be the first slide when I present on Tuesday.
All right. Very good.
Okay, good. Any other comments then for next week's preparation? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gill?
No, that's it, sir.
All right. Board members. Ms. Frost, any announcements? Okay. Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Serna? All right, I have none as well. So that takes us to the close of today's agenda. Thank you, Flo and Krista and Robin, who was here earlier for assisting us. We'll be back in session then next Tuesday morning at 9:30, start budget hearings, and we'll have a full week next week. So with that, we will stand in German.